So folks that I just let in from the waiting room, if you would just put yourself on mute, please. Or I can mute you. One more minute and then we'll start. Okay, we're gonna start now. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We'll be conducting the meeting via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There's no in-person attendance. Members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded, and within forty-eight hours, it will post on a link of the town's website or in the town's social media page. The following members of the zoning board of appeals are participating: myself, Brian Heath, Chair; Anna Klimas, Vice Chair; Dan Greenberg, Member. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as a roll call. Robert Rulli, the Director of Economic Community Development, is participating as one of the town staff employees. Bob, I don't think Steve is with us tonight. Solari?
Steve is not here.
Okay. All right. So at this time, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as it appears on the agenda, the project representatives' mic will be unmuted. If the project's a public hearing and allows public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your questions by listing your name and address and your question. Chair will recognize questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes. Again, please state your name, your address, before asking a question. If you're on the phone, if you hit star nine, you can use the raise your hand feature. So we are going to start. The first item on the agenda is a special permit. It's for location at 135 Sharon Extension. This is a continuation from our last meeting of May twenty-second. The applicant representative for this... Is it Mr. Silver, Jr.?
It's Mr. Marcelo and Mr. Sylvia, Jr.
That's correct. Hi, Marillo Silva, RM Property and Design, 167 County Street, Attleboro. I'm here representing Ronaldo Marcelo Landrade at 135 Sharon Court Extension for the special permit request to construct a pool house.
We're gonna stop you for a second. Mr. Chair, did you want to have a motion to take the first fourteen Born Street and two fifty Whitman Street out of order?
No, I think we can buy, we'll just go with, I think, on this one.
I appreciate it.
Go ahead. Yep. No worries. So I think, as you guys mentioned, we are here on a continuation of the discussions from the previous meeting. I think I am not able to share here to get the project up.
One second.
Well, if, Merle, if I could just ask a couple of questions first. We had suggested that you, at the prior meeting, there was a lot of lot of discussions regarding this project and the property with the Butters. And we thought it would be a good idea if yourself or the owner of the property conversed with some of the Butters. So, oh, that didn't happen. Is that correct?
So I was not able to, myself, I did advise Ronaldo if he was able to converse with the the direct Butters of the property. I'm not sure. I wasn't able to get ahold of him today. I believe he's on travel. So hence why he is not able to be here with us today. So I don't believe that he was able to talk to the Butters.
So is there anything different in your proposal from the last meeting?
So we do not have a modification. We do have... So we don't have the engineering complete yet for for the appropriate catch basins in the property, in the portion of the property to the left of the existing garage structure. So I don't have that to show today, but that up, because it's not complete yet. But we do have that, which will be submitted together with the project when...
So are you looking for a continuance?
So I think I would, yeah, unless... I think I see here some names that might have joined for this, some of the Butters. I don't know if they had any additional items.
They do, and they've sent some correspondence, and those are made part of the record. So I think, as Member Klimas indicated, if you're gonna ask for a continuance, now would be the appropriate time to ask.
All right. So I would like to ask for a continuance for us to complete the engineering and get the appropriate input from the Butters.
Do we have a motion on that from?
And make a motion to approve the request for continuance.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Dan? So it's been moved for a continuance. The next meeting, well, when will you have that? Do you think you'll have that, Marillo?
We should have the engineering complete for the drainage for the next meeting.
Okay, then we will look to do the continuance. Today is what, the twelfth? So it's twenty-sixth? Is that next meeting, Bob?
Yeah. And I just say that you might want to postpone that meeting, because there's a special meeting of the planning board that night as well that I need to be at as well. So I would suggest we continue this to the July meeting.
All right. Yeah, we kind of can't run really the meeting without you. So that would be the tenth of July.
Right.
Correct. All right, so... Really, we were going to have to continue until July tenth.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is fourteen Born Street. It's a setback variance. I guess it's a rear setback for an addition, a twelve-by-fourteen addition. Looking for a two-point-five-foot variance to the thirty-foot rear setback. Who is representing the applicant or the applicant here today?
Rebecca, Silver Engineering.
Hey, Beck.
Hi, how are you? It's been a while.
Been a very long time.
It has been. It has been. So don't beat me up, okay? Try to be nice to me tonight. Yes, so we're here for a zoning board, actually. So if I can share my screen.
You should be able to, Rebecca.
I can bore you with all the dialogue that we got going here. Okay, let's see. Okay, let's see. There we go. Let's start with an existing conditions. Here we are on Born Street. We're sandwiched off of Summer between Park Ave, Covington Street, and all these nice tiny little lots that we have in this area. So we are proposing to add to the existing dwelling that has a garage a little proposed addition, okay? And we are putting this proposed addition over the existing deck, which I can show a picture of, so you can visualize it. And just a little bit more, we need a little bit more room to get a decent-sized proposed addition that would function as a bedroom. So I don't know if I can switch the visual here. In your application, you were supposed to have a narrative that explained everything. Can you tell me if anybody there has actually received or saw this zoning board narrative? Because I don't know if you got it. It was on the application. It was a copy and paste. And then when I looked, I'm like, oh, they didn't get all of it.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that. I...
I don't either.
I don't either.
Okay, okay. So let's go back to this, and let me just continue with some of the other visuals I have, so we can ask questions and talk. We did get Solari's letter saying that we needed the variance, right? So seeking five-point-two feet. And this all stems from a hardship of this lot right here. So this lot was granted a variance back in eighty... I'm gonna get the date wrong. Ninety-five. And this variance allowed this lot, A, to be divided into two. And this existing home at three oh four was given all the proper setbacks in the area. And this tiny little lot, B, was subjected to this, all the regular setbacks for this oddly-shaped tapered lot. And what happens is you can't fit a normal-sized house with garage. And now the hope to get another bedroom because of COVID, because of the need to work from home. So what they did was they converted a whole, one of the bedrooms into an office. And one of the other bedrooms was for a child. They went off to college. They're looking to come back. We have two homeowners that both need offices, and we just need a little bit more room to give them a functional living space.
So, Ben.
Well, I'm just gonna do one more picture, one more picture. This is...
So that stops all there, all right?
This is there, and we're only gonna be coming out a little bit further, and we're enclosing it up. Actually, I do have a hand sketch from the, what would be the structural architectural plans.
Is it a single-story?
No, it would go all the way up. So they were gonna use this egress to come out, but the bedroom is gonna be up here. So they're gonna actually have to walk through what is a bedroom, that office, to get to the bedroom, but they're okay with that, given the size of the constraints we got going here. So if you want to see that visual, I can probably do that, too.
No, that's...
That's just a hand sketch, but it tells a story, too. But yes, this is where it's gonna be two-story. This is still gonna be the egress to get outside. And then the actual usable space is gonna be up here. You can't see my cursor, can you? I'm pointing on my cursor, and you can't see it. Okay. So I can go back to the justification that was written up by Mr. Silver here at the office, or we can just talk from this, or I can answer questions. I don't know where you want to go and how you feel about it.
Well, I was looking, the way I was looking at it, I see, I saw the proposed addition, and then I saw this deck to be removed. So the structure's already there, and from the deck...
Yes.
The existing deck, it's...
Nothing.
From the edge of the deck, it's still not thirty feet.
Correct. Yes, it's such a tiny little lot.
Yeah. I mean, I did see that, you know, the deck was, what, ten by something?
Yes. I couldn't fit it.
To your point, it's gonna be a couple feet either way.
Twenty-seven, four, twenty-eight, three. Yeah, we're asking not necessarily for the five-point-two, but...
I've kind of read through everything. Anna or Dan, do you have any questions for Rebecca?
I do not.
What will the first floor space be used for in this proposed addition?
Besides the egress to the patio, I think they're gonna put like a, maybe a fireplace or some... Instead of having an outdoor seating area, they're gonna have an inside seating area. So they're gonna use the space without expanding on more, I guess is a good way to put it.
Is it, is it gonna be on a slab or...?
It's a slab, I believe. Again, let me get back to that sketch of the building.
Can I see the hand sketch that you're referencing?
Please, yes, please.
I'm doing it right now. I'm doing it right now. Oop, click, 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 click. I do have the homeowner and the contractor on as well. So this is the existing home. We're looking at it. The street is up here. So we got some windows, a nice little fireplace to be able to egress onto the patio. And then this is the second floor. So this is the existing office, bedroom, office. And then we're gonna have a usable space for a bedroom and then be able to walk through the office.
The fact that the fireplace, Becker, is inside the, I'm guessing you're doing it, it's a gas insert type?
Yeah, the contractors can answer that if you'd like. Scott?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, you can.
Yes, it is going to be a gas insert.
Okay.
I'll just keep...
Their intention is to replace the deck space with that and add to their existing living room.
This is the rear elevation. You know, you're looking at the back of the house. Let's keep going. Right side, couple windows. This is the existing dwelling with the left side. This is where they're gonna exit onto the patio. And then here's your foundation plan.
And it will be a slab.
Yes, sorry, footing and slab, yes.
Dan or Anna, any additional questions? Not, I just want to open it up to anybody.
Nope, none for me.
All right. If there are any Butters or anybody here for this who would like to ask a question, make any comments, if you could use the raise my hand and, again, just give your name, your address, and then state your question. Time, but I'm not seeing any. Just as a general question, Rebecca, the homeowners, have they discussed this with any of the direct Butters?
Scott, the homeowner's on, that can answer that?
I believe they have spoken to the direct Butter behind them and the one, I believe, on the left-hand side of the home. I don't know that they spoke to anyone else, but I, for some reason, I do believe that they, I had spoke with them, and they had talked to a couple of the Butters, and I think it was those two.
Hello, yeah, sorry to interject here. I'm using my phone. I can't figure out how to raise my hand and message, but yeah, I am Sherram's neighbor. I am at three oh four Summer. I'm here to voice my support.
Okay. Could you just identify yourself, your name and address, please, full name?
Yes. Again, apologies for the technical glitch. My name is Daniel Higgins, and I live at three oh four Summer.
Thank you. Okay.
And again, voicing my support for my good neighbor.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Bob?
No.
All right, with no further questions, if we can make a motion to close the public comment section of the meeting?
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna close that. Would one of you care to make a motion on the requested variance?
I would, I would make a motion to approve the variance of the five-point-two, given that there is a substantial hardship based on the lot size. And I do not believe that it takes away from the, or causes a public detriment.
And I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The variance of five-point-two feet has...
If you could just do a roll call vote, please.
We did. I said all, all in favor.
I mean, just name them. So go Anna and Dan.
Oh, I, okay, gotcha. Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And myself, agree.
All right.
Thank you.
The motion has passed. The variance of five-point-two feet for the rear setback has been approved. And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next on the agenda is two fifteen Whitman. This is a special permit in relation to the granting of a retreat lot off off of Winter, Whitman Street, excuse me. Who is here for?
Pick me. Pick me.
Okay, Rebecca?
Yes, give me a moment. I was trying to like undo and reload here. Okay. See, this one. We'll start with this one. All right, give me a second. I opened a lot of other stuff. I just want to close them all out.
So everybody's aware, does he understand, under, this is a request for a special permit under eight-point-two for a retreat lot. You know, minimum lot, lot areas, hundred fifty thousand square feet, forty thousand contiguous uplands, thirty linear feet at all points of the land.
Yep. Let's see, minimum area, driveway, driveway separation, and a turnaround.
Is that the turnaround down at the end, way down?
That is the turnaround. Yep.
All right, you got that, yep.
I do. I got twenty-five feet driveway to driveway. This came before the planning board with an A and R, where we divided one eighty-five Whitman Street into a parcel, a parcel, and two buildable lots right now.
Okay. And this... So this, Anna, excuse me, Rebecca, just, we were questioning, so this, this other, which is designated parcel C is just an unbillable parcel right now?
At the moment, yes.
And it was all owned by the same party?
It is, it is owned by Mr. Botcher right now, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, it is. This parcel right here, lot, I'm sorry, this lot two is been sold to Perkility, and it has already have a building on it. This one has also been sold to Perkility, and they'll be developing that one after we do some perk tests. I believe this one is still owned by Botcher at the moment, but once we finalize and work out this special permit request, it would be sold to Mr. To Perkility Trust. So this is how, okay, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, this is how all three lots would work together, the driveways with the separation, the length with the radius, the thirty-foot all the way up, and I can put the plan of land, A and R up there if you'd like to see it. We have the area. We have the upland. The wetlands are way, way, way back. So we meet all the criteria. So now I would just like to hear what you might have to say and ask questions.
No, I was just gonna say, as far as the construction part of it, I mean, as you understand, you know, with us, it's just, you're going for a special permit. You just have to meet the requirements, you know, thirty feet, you know, hundred and fifty, the forty, within twenty-five feet of an existing driveway, if you'd want to put it in there.
Yep, did it. Right there.
So to my understanding, unless, Dana, Anna, do you see anything that this doesn't meet the requirements for the special permit of a retreat lot? And Rebecca, help me out. I don't believe there are any...
Any...
Any issues?
No, no, we meet it all. I left a little table up here to show that, and a few little notes to say what's like next and what's been done.
And I guess, I guess you were maybe getting where we were going before, because that other parcel C? That's a retreat lot. You can't have another one out of the same parcel owned by the same people.
Correct.
In five years.
Correct.
Okay, just want to throw that out there.
Understood.
Okay. Any questions, Anna or Dan?
Oh, I'm satisfied.
I'm satisfied.
Is this a public comment one?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
Okay. So if there's anybody in the audience right now that has any questions, if you would use the raise my hand feature and state your name, address, and ask any questions you have.
Not seeing any, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If we don't have any questions, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing section of this permit request.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing section.
Second it.
All in favor, Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And myself, Brian Heath, aye. Okay, so the public portion of this request has been closed.
Mr. Chairman, there is something just appeared in the chat. Let me just see what it is. Mr. DeRoca indicates that he has a question.
Okay.
So I will unmute Mr. DeRoca. Or Mr. DeRoca, you can unmute yourself and then just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Hey, I'm Peter DeRocer at one thirty-five Pheasant Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I am the Butter directly behind the parcel in question, and my questions are the twenty-foot buffer that is left on the plan that you've just seen. Will that be maintained? That's question number one.
May I, Chair? So if we're talking about this open space parcel that is part of your subdivision, Pheasant Lane?
No, no, it's about your lot itself. There, when you guys cleared the entire lot, you left twenty feet on your side of all trees. So my question is, are you planning on keeping that buffer, or are you planning on breaking it down?
Nope, that was the limit of the clearing at the time, and so that will remain. We stayed within, we stayed within that envelope with the grading, so that we didn't have to go any further.
Okay, question number two, is there is a dead tree in said buffer? I wanted to know if you, if you went to, going to develop this lot, you would take that tree down, because it could fall on my property?
I could put that request to the developer, but it is entirely up to him.
Okay, that's it. And question number three is, do you plan on bringing any fill into said property? There is a very, very water issue on the back end of that lot, since it floods every time it rains. If you're going to bring fill in, it could have a, an effect on Pheasant Lane. So my question to you would be, are you planning on bringing any fill in at this time to build your property?
The, I don't know if you can see the screen, but yes, the lot will be built up, and it will be graded gently swale. It's gonna be have a sloping swale around the two houses closest to, proposed closest to you. And it would swing around behind and ahead towards the back, not towards you.
Okay, but the entire lot will not be filled, just around the houses as needed?
Correct, just around the house. Yep, fill costs money. We don't want to, we don't want to bring more than we have to.
And how are you gonna deal with the septic issues for this issue, this lot, since probably it's not going to perk? Well, I know this lot won't, most likely. Are you going to, like, would you have to build up a a septic, like a raised septic in a situation, or do you plan on tying into the sewage system with a pump?
No sewage. We actually did perk these lots. The only one that didn't get a favorable lot right now is the one closest to the street. So this parcel being questioned did perk. The water table was such that it is going to be higher than the natural grade, but the grading around the house will allow it to blend, and you won't see a mounted system. You're gonna see a mounted house, is what's gonna happen. But no, it did perk for this parcel.
Okay, there is, the water seems to all want to roll in that one particular area in the back of that lot. So when we're actually clearing the trees, they couldn't even put the equipment there, because they were getting stuck. Now, that was my main, yeah, that was my main question about as far as that goes. So, so I believe you have answered all of my questions.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
Bob, anybody else?
You're on mute, Bob. Sorry, no.
No, okay. No, okay. We'll try that one again. At this time, I'd like a motion to close the public comment section.
I will make another motion to close the public comment section of this hearing.
Second.
I second that.
All in favor, Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So the public comment section is now closed. We have a motion from either Dana Anna to, in regards to the. Request for the special permit under eight point two to make the said parcel be a retreat lot.
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the request for a special permit under eight point two for the proposed retreat lot at map twenty-three. Lot seventy-six parcel B, based on the fact that it has filled all of the requirements.
Okay, second.
I would second that motion.
All right, all in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Myself, aye. The special permit is granted. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thanks, Rebecca.
I don't think we have any board business and then the only remaining item before the. Well-deserved adjournment would be the approval of the minutes from the March twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments in regards to the minutes? I'd request a motion from Anna or Dan to approve the minutes from the May twenty-second meeting.
March twenty-seventh.
March, excuse me, March twenty-second.
The motion to approve the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
I will second the motion.
All in favor, Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So the meeting minutes have been approved. All right, that being the end of business, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Would make a motion to adjourn.
No second.
All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Go Celtics. All right.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.